Welcome and thank you for joining us for our Gladstone Planning Commission meeting Tuesday, November nineteenth. Tammy, can you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Mercero.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag select, please.
Again, I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All items listed below are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a commission member or person in the audience requests specific items be removed from the consent agenda for discussion prior to the time the commission votes on the motion to adopt the consent agenda. Number one, approval of the September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting minutes. Item number two, the monthly planning report. September and October. And then item number three is public hearing for file DR dash twenty-four dash zero five, CU dash twenty-four dash zero two, construction of two dugout structures at Cracksburger Middle School baseball field at one seven 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 Webster Road. Gladstone School District owner Sasha Beckwith. Sab is at S A B Design and Drafting. Item number four, two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six Long Range Planning Commission Work Plan. And then business from the public and then from the planning commission. So let's go to item number one, please. I would entertain motions for approval of our meeting minutes.
So moved.
Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Labonte and seconded by Commissioner Mercero. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Weiss.
Approve.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero. Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting minutes approved. Item number two, the monthly planning report. Heather?
Thank you, Chair Smith. In the packet this evening, you have monthly planning reports for September and October because we did not have a meeting last month. And so it just goes over the work that we did, some of which was work that the Planning Commission established by sending recommendations to the city council. Most notably, the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Code Package that the city council did adopt in October. And then just last week in November, they finalized that information with that commercial parking lot tax that was also approved. So all of that finishes our parking requirement for the climate friendly work. And then we'll finish out our town center project next year. So that grant will be wrapped up. But that was a big piece of it. So good job to everybody who worked on that because that was a big lift. Building permits have been fairly steady as well as customer service contacts. We've been a little light this year on pre-application meetings, I would say, but otherwise just kind of steady moving along. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you very much. Okay. Item number three, public hearing. Like to open the public hearing for application number DR dash twenty-four dash zero five, CU dash twenty-four dash zero two. The procedure we would like to follow tonight is receiving the planning department report and then applicant testimony, proponent testimony, opponent testimony, applicant rebuttal, decision to continue or close the hearing, planning commission discussion and decision. Now, does any commission member wish to disqualify himself or herself for any personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight? Or does any commission member wish to report any significant expertise or pre-hearing contacts? Please indicate if you visited the site in connection with this application. Commissioner Volbada?
Yes, I'm very familiar with the site. No expertise contact, no financial interest. Yes, I will be participating.
Commissioner Weiss?
I have been to the site many times. I'm familiar with this area and I plan to participate and have no concern.
Commissioner Langston?
Yep, I've been to the site and I will be participating.
Okay. Commissioner Mercero?
I live next to the site, almost. I live next to the site. And I'm no expertise contact.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
I've been at the site numerous times and I have no financial interests and do plan to participate.
Wonderful. Commissioner Labonte?
No expertise. And I've been there many, many, many times. Yep.
I have visited the site. I have no expertise issues either and will be contributing this evening. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the right of any commission member to hear this matter? Is there any member of the audience who wishes to question the jurisdiction of this body to act on behalf of the city council on this matter? Oregon land use laws require that all issues be raised if the issues are to be appealed. Failure to raise the issues at this hearing may invalidate their further appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA. Any party has the right to request a continuance to this hearing or, in the alternative, to have the record left open for seven days. Failure to raise constitutional or other or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the commission to respond to the issue will preclude an action for damages in circuit court. If you're going to testify, please try to address the applicable criteria. Will the staff please present the report? Any questions from the commission? No? Okay.
Thank you, Chair Smith. We'll just queue up a brief PowerPoint presentation to go through the pertinent facts on the application. Okay, thank you, Tammy.
Our monitors turned off.
Getting them right now.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so we are here this evening to talk about an application for, oh, it says design review. It should say design review and conditional use permit for addition of dugout structures at the Cracksburger Middle School Baseball Field. The project site is at one seven 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 Webster Road. The dugout structures are wood structures with metal framing that will be added to where the benches currently exist. The applicant on this project is Gladstone Junior Baseball Organization and the site is owned by Gladstone School District. So application was signed by the school district. As far as the project site, the zoning is R seven point two, which is residential. So a school and facilities associated with a school are conditional use in that zoning district. The property size is nineteen point eight eight acres, so just about twenty acres overall for the whole site. We did send out our public notice to the applicant and owner, property owners and residents within two hundred and fifty feet of the property, as well as Gladstone Public Works and Engineering Police Department, Clackamas Fire, Oak Lodge, Water Environment Services and Oregon Department of Transportation. We did hear back from Public Works Engineering, Police, Fire and Oak Lodge that they have no concerns with the application. We didn't hear back from Water Environment Services or ODOT, which was not surprising on this small application. There's no identified overlays here, so we're not looking at any habitat conservation areas or flood plains or greenways or anything like that. The, so again, this is required to go through design review and conditional use permit. The design review is required when a new structure is added to a site, and these are two new structures. And then again, school and associated building structures and facilities are conditional uses in our seven point two zoning district. Not sure why it's beeping, but. So the review was pretty straightforward. This is a very small addition to this existing site. However, there was a condition that I did feel compelled to add, which was to install a pathway meeting ADA standards. It's a minimum of six feet wide that connects from the pathway, which is really hard to see on this diagram here. I apologize, but there's an asphalt pathway running along sort of north-south on this diagram that could be connected to these structures once the new structures are put in place in the area of the orange arrows or wherever it makes sense, you know, as far as like grading and engineering, just a way that you could connect to these dugouts that's not existing right now. And the reason I recommend that condition is based on the portion of the code in chapter seventeen point zero five zero, point zero two zero six, where we require an onsite pedestrian circulation system for new buildings being added to the site, that it shall connect all buildings and other areas such as common outdoor areas, recreational areas, and that the system shall be hard-surfaced and constructed to a minimum of six feet wide and that it shall comply with Americans with Disabilities Act. So it was pretty clear to me in the code that that would be a requirement of adding these structures, that you would need to do some sort of connection there. You know, it did, it was something that I reviewed with some other planners in the office to talk about reasonability of this and like, you know, baseball is maybe not typically a sport because of the nature of it being grass and dirt field that you would have necessarily ADA accessibility. However, you might have a coaching staff that is needing that type of facility, or you might have a player who's injured who wants to join their teammate in the dugout, teammates in the dugout or something like that. So to really comply with the development code, it does make sense to require that condition from a planning side. So we did hear back from the applicant that this would definitely add cost to the project, which is not surprising. But I don't believe the applicant is in attendance tonight, but we'll wait and hear that when we get to public testimony. So with that, we do as staff recommend the Planning Commission approve this project, the design review and the conditional use application with the standard conditions, as well as the one special condition regarding installation of a pathway. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and we can see if applicants here and also take public testimony.
Can I ask, on the previous slide, the section of chapter seventeen oh five oh two oh, are we beholden to anything in the ADA unrelated to chapter seventeen?
Everything that goes through building permit goes through an ADA review, so I don't know what those requirements would be, but it could be triggered anyway. I asked that question as well. I didn't receive an answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Excuse me, I have a question about our packet on page three dash three.
Okay.
Item number seven, it says all new utilities should be placed underground.
Yes.
Are there any new utilities being planned?
There were none shown and none planned in my discussions with the architect. I was just wanting to make sure that if somewhere down the line, the district or the baseball organization fundraises for like a light inside of this facility or something, or a water fountain,
Water.
that we would make sure that that was placed underground when that happens. So we're sort of covering future, but there's no utilities proposed with application.
But there will be a water feed.
There's not proposed.
Not proposed. Thank you.
Oh, well, you'll have a. They were down working. Sir? Yeah. You will have, you'll have an opportunity to come up and and we'll have you come up and you can speak. So it'll be all recorded when they take the meeting minutes, okay? So.
Who actually owns the property this year, John? County has listened to Gladstone Street Park. Local map has listened to Gladstone Street Park. And yet, over the years, Gladstone made it in the city, there's mold and things up there. We did the French, the guys did it. And now it's the school district.
Ms. Austin?
Yes, so the school district did sign as the owner. So they did sign stating that they are the owner of this property.
Okay, there you go. Okay, any other questions?
May I ask exactly who is funding this?
It was fundraised through the junior baseball organization.
Do we know how much, is there like a percentage or a dollar amount that the, you know, the ADA path will?
I don't know the answer to that.
And would you happen to know, it'll say that we didn't include that. To assume that the school to have access to some grant money for ADA paths or facilities, if we were to not include that today, this school will have some avenue for that if it.
Possibly. I don't know about on the school site itself. I know that there are like safe routes to schools grants, but those focus on getting kids to the school property. So I'm not aware of any specific onsite grants that are immediately available to do that type of work. Yeah.
So in their application, the fundraiser that they did, that will cover all the costs for this to be done? Or will some of it go towards the school district?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I don't know who's paying to construct it. I do know just from conversations with the architect and from emails that perhaps some of you received also from the junior baseball organization.
I didn't receive anything.
Okay, they did email the city council to express concern that they had worked through the design of this with the school district and thought they had met all the city requirements. And so we're surprised to find out that there was a city review required because this came through as a building permit and got flagged as needing design review and conditional use.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Commissioners? Okay, is the applicant or his representative present?
I see no one online.
Okay. And are you? Okay. So I guess now is the time for public testimony.
So public testimony, Mike Bjork, please come up.
Yes. And before you get started, please state your name and address. And then you need to turn on the microphone.
Okay, my name's Michael Bjork. I live at one eight one three five Trevor Court in Gladstone. That tax lot borders the backfield at Cracksburger. We've been homeowners there and lived there for the past thirty-six years. When we moved there, that field was all trees and brush. And we've watched it be converted to football fields, baseball fields, track facilities, storage sheds. Over those years, that's happened. I hope I only have a few more than three minutes to do this. Okay, so my wife and I are opposed to the building of dugouts on the ball field at Cracksburger. We've lived in our residence for thirty-six years, adjoining the backfield of Cracksburger. Through those years, we've watched all this transform to like track asphalt trail that you spoke of is not asphalt all the way. There's a section that's gravel that's down towards the shed. That was, that was asphalt at one time. Some construction work there on the field, it got ruined and they never replaced it. So history on that. The Hawks Trail that used to run circumvent the whole schoolyard there used to be a very nice trail that was barked dust every couple of years and maintained for the public. Has not been maintained for many, many years now. Turned into kind of a mud pit along there. My biggest thing is the maintenance down there at this part of the park. I have a lot of pictures I took to show you folks just what the maintenance looks like down there. Back when the city was maintaining it, John and John, I've forgotten his last name. I can't think of it, but they did a pretty good job of mowing and cleaning and weeding and, you know, spraying for brush. That doesn't seem to be the thing anymore. It's not maintained at all. Until the summer when they started redoing the field for baseball, which is a great idea, all for it. But the maintenance down there is sorely lacking. As my pictures will show. One of the concerns we have is the shipping container that they put in there to store their football gear for the Little League football probably ten years ago or so anyway, has turned into a graffiti sign. Our house looks directly at it. I saw to see this graffiti. The track itself has been allowed to grass grow up through the cracks in the track. The track's just going to pot because nobody maintains it. The shed, the same issue, it's storage shed vandalism caused them to put a cyclone fence around it with barbed wire on the top to keep kids from climbing in there and vandalizing. The gutters ripping off, it's full, the roof's full of moss, you know, it's full of weeds in there. Nobody maintains it. The track the same way, no one's maintaining it. There's a nice shot put pit that they put in by the metal box. That shot put pit, they brought in a lot of pea gravel and made a nice shot put area for the school, a concrete launch pad and everything. Nothing but weeds, solid weeds. Nobody maintains it. Yeah, that's, that's my main concern. The vandalism, we've witnessed so many things out there in thirty-six years in that field from drug usage. I've called the police a number of times for, for kids on the roof of the school. I chased them off myself. The metal box sits there. The container, I kick kids off of that all the time. Someone's going to get hurt jumping off of that and being stupid. I witnessed kids smoking pot out there. I've called the school about that before and the principal comes out, you know, has tried to chase him down. I picked up beer bottles, wine bottles, like on a Sunday morning when I'm walking out there that they've left around that container. I guess my thing is vandalism and being out of sight. There's no windows from the school facing that whole part of the field. It's only neighbors in their eyes, which is usually me, that see that stuff going on. And I'm afraid if they put dugouts out there that it's just going to be a place for kids to congregate out of sight, sneak out there for a cigarette during break, whatever, and, and the graffiti issue again, it's on that box. It's going to be on those baseball dugouts because nobody watches it. So while it's a great idea, there's no, no lavatory facilities there. They brought in porta potties occasionally when they do have games. I've witnessed players other times that are there urinating behind the box. There used to be a tree that I complained about a number of years ago that I actually witnessed people having sexual intercourse under that tree. I complained and the people came to John and John came and cut me down and saying it's no longer a problem. But the box is still a problem and I'm afraid the dugouts will be too, so. I had this all written out, but I've kind of strayed away from it. And I have a lot of pictures that show just what I'm talking about right here, the track and the condition of the box and everything. So would love for you to take a look at them.
Is, is there anything else?
I think that's about all I can say.
Why don't you go ahead and hand us the pictures and we can take a look at it.
If they have any questions about it, I'd be more than happy to let you know.
Go ahead, Commissioner Smith.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, you scratched a lot of itches with your comments, all of them, which I'm sure are valid. But it seems to me there's a, it's, we're looking at a junior baseball application and there would be the, it seems to me it's, it's police school parks that would, it would be more apt to address the issues that, that you raise. I may be wrong there, but junior baseball doesn't, wouldn't have anything to do with that area other than when they're playing games there.
Well, they had the junior football team up there for a number of years. And then when they put in the new facilities down at the high school, the AstroTurf and everything, they put that box in there, their container box to store that football team's uniforms and things throughout the year. They pulled them out just for the one month in August that they used it. And now they don't even go there anymore. They don't play there. They played out at the high school. I haven't even seen them practice there the last couple of years, so. I'm all for it. It's just these other peripheral things that I have to look at every day from my house and I have to witness these things and homeless people, I've called the police on before there too, so.
Sir, have you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Moreno.
Go ahead.
Do you have any recommendations?
Recommendations, yeah. Put some cameras out there, catch the people that do these things, but it's a day and age when we don't catch people very often. We really don't have any, anything other than more supervision, more, more eyes on it.
We're almost done looking at your pictures. Have you had a meeting with the school district?
No, I haven't. I've called them. I've talked to, let's see, about two years ago, I contacted someone down there because the corner that I live in was being overgrown with ivy and for thirty years, the bank right behind my house, I have to mow that whole area. I mowed that whole area through there because they don't do it very often. They do do it, but not often. They took down a tree a couple of years ago that was, was sick. And since then, the tree's grown back like a big bush. And they put in the disc golf course around it, which is another added feature that I like down. A lot of people are utilizing that disc golf course. And I've not seen one person yet in the, almost a year that has been there now, I've not seen one person abuse that, that disc golf course. I've not seen any guys with alcohol like a lot of this golf courses I've been to. It's really a good deal, so. If it can be supervised, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
And maintained.
Heather? We don't, we don't have any jurisdiction in regards to some of these issues. Do, we don't, do we?
We, we don't have jurisdiction over maintenance of the larger field, but we can ask the applicant who has actually joined on the Zoom if there's a plan for junior baseball organization to, they'll, I know from having a junior baseball player that if we arrive and there's trash in the dugout, that our players clean that up and they clean up the area before they play and they clean up after. So I think the junior baseball organization's on the hook for what they use the site for and what happens in the dugout while they're there and what they come upon so that they can play it. But then I think it is a conversation with the school district as far as the greater maintenance of the area.
That's why I ask about the maintenance, who's responsible for it, city or school? And I show you right on the Google hunting map that tells every homeowner in the world on there.
Yeah.
It actually shows Gladstone City Park, does not show.
You know, a lot of times there are agreements, intergovernmental agreements between school districts and cities. And so you know, how it's been done traditionally may or may not be following the agreements that are in place and may or may not be following who's got jurisdiction of it, but it might be worth a conversation between the two entities and just making sure that that's clear.
Would it be appropriate if we impose any special conditions regarding the dugouts and the maintenance of them?
There's nothing in the development code that would specifically link that, but it's certainly something that we can, you know, as, as city staff, we can mention it to our public works department. If they say, nope, it's all school district, then it can certainly be something that the school district is made aware of.
Okay.
And the school district is the applicant on this, so they should be, they'll be made aware of this.
Well, it's like you're saying right there that could the, the baseball guys be responsible for their area? Great, let's have the football guys come and paint that, that container so the graffiti's off of it now. And the school district own, they're, they're the guys with the other storage that has barbed wire and cyclone fence around it. As you can see in the pictures, the gutters falling off and there's moss all over it and the weeds. They opened it up, you know, once in the spring. They used to have fall sports that they would use those tracks for because of budget cuts or whatever. We don't have a cross-country team at Cracksburger anymore. I'm not sure if they have any spring, they, they come out for a few weeks in the spring and utilize those facilities. But it's a shame to see them just going to pot because somebody couldn't take some weed killer out and spray the cracks.
Yeah.
Just a comment, they impact you have a cross-country team. My daughter's on it. And they do well, go, go.
And they had a great time and there were quite a few turned out, so.
My, my guess is in being, spending a lot of time around baseball fields and, and teams, especially youth teams of the facilities, my guess would be pretty well taken care of. My my guess isn't being spending a lot of time around baseball fields and and teams, especially youth teams of the facilities, my guess would be pretty well taken care of. Um.
That that's my understanding as well. The um, I wasn't aware that the shipping container was used by youth football and the fact that it maybe isn't ma- makes me wonder too if maybe it just needs to be picked up or something too, you know, so just maybe letting the district know about these things. I'm sure they have a lot of maintenance and few people who are doing that and so.
I would definitely recommend going to the school district and having a meeting with someone.
Capable of rattling their cages again, but but that's that's my concerns because I have to like look at it all the time and
Right.
Uh, they've called me the the mayor of Ridge Gate many times because I'm the only one who does do that sort of thing, so.
Well, thank you very much for your time and for sharing your pictures. It sounds like we have the applicant online, so we kind of did things out of order. We can hear from the applicant now. So can we get testimony from the applicant, please?
We're moving him to become a panelist, so.
Thank you.
We need those pictures. You can keep them.
Okay.
Give them to Heather.
Yeah, that is. I live across the street from that dump.
Thank you.
So Tim Nystrom is on the call now with Gladstone Junior Baseball.
Um, just to answer just a couple of questions that I just noticed, um. That is correct that the school and or the city does the main, is supposed to do the bulk of the maintenance or maintaining? Um. And uh, sorry, we do when we show up, we are also the ones that clean before and after every game. Uh, we know when the city tells us that they're done, let's just use uh Derek's Field as an example. They tell us when they're done with the amount of prep that they're gonna do and then we come in as families and we do the rest because it's not to baseball standard, so therefore we're fully aware of doing that. Um. As far as uh, we can't touch anything on school property without school permission, so that's a little bit, they're a little bit more strict than the city. Um, because the city knows also how much we do on our own at Meldrum and Derek's, which saves taxpayer dollars because we end up doing the bulk of the work.
Does anyone, do any of the commissioners have any questions for this gentleman?
Sure, and I assume I know the answer here. This is Commissioner Labonte and um. So the the facilities there are essentially non-existent. Um, if there's gonna be any rain, you've got tents coming in, teams bringing in tents to cover the dugouts. Uh, it seems as if you're moving the field up because it's a muddy mess in that lower field. Um, so these seem like they're good improvements. The dugout, in what ways do you think it will improve uh the experience for the the uh junior athletes?
Well, one is, we're prepping him for high school. Our sole goal at youth baseball from third or from kindergarten on is to get him ready for high school. And the way just the little bench that we have, even at Derek's Field, they have actual dugouts. We do not have dugouts down at uh Meldrum, but that's also a big city park, so you can't really throw them in for five baseball fields and I, there's a space issue. But this is junior high and this is where you're getting ready for baseball and the way Coach Webster has wanted it for years. As far as dug dug dugout etiquette, what's acceptable, what's not, getting them prepped, that's one nice thing. Excuse me, um. Sorry, I'm uh, okay, and then. The walkways, I think, is the only other issue. Um, and I guess we did move up um from the lower field because the outfield, we had a lot of rain outs because that lap outfield out there retains water and doesn't dry out, so the kids are running and like literally sinking to their ankles in May and in the outfield. So that moving up, it was a great move for us. And you know, everybody at the high school did a lot of work prepping that field.
I I didn't catch your name. Um, if you could please state your name and and who you're representing, so we have it on the record.
My name is Tim Nystrom. I'm the president for Gladstone Junior Baseball.
Excellent, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions of him?
Yeah, Tim, can you tell us uh how long has Gladstone Youth Youth Baseball been continuous in having a middle school program? And uh how long has that middle school program been at the middle school at Cracksburger?
Uh, it's not really a middle school program, um, but we have a, we call them seniors. So baseball is designed, JBO is basically a third and fourth graders are minors and they play at Derek's. Uh, fifth and sixth graders are called juniors and they play at Meldrum. Seventh and eighth graders are called seniors and they play at Cracksburger. So it's not really a Cracksburger program, it's just that's where they play because that's where, and that's the fields that we use for those groups. And for how long? Um, oh my God, forever, because Greg Bender, back in the day, that senior program, um, and he's been around for, or was around forever.
Okay, because I I think some of the concern that we heard tonight was around the youth football, you know, setting up some infrastructure and then not being there to maintain the infrastructure. I think like as a, you know, we'll we'll get into this more in deliberation, but as it pertains, like when we think about uh graffiti or something like that on the backside of the dugout, if we believe that there's going to be a team continuously there of keeping and maintaining that and being available to potentially, you know, rectify some of the graffiti situation that, you know, gives me a little more confidence than what's happening with.
We we have at least two teams at the senior level and we have for over a decade. So that's two teams. We're borderline three on some years. Um, graffiti, half the time the city will leave us paint at uh Cracksburg, uh, excuse me, Derek's. So if we see something, we just touch it up as we're there so we can get rid of the quote rocket ships off the bench that that are left numerous times. So, but yeah, our present, the only year we did not have baseball was COVID. Um, every other year we've had at least two teams there at that level.
And what months are they active?
We start, we do tryouts in January and we go all the way through fall ball, which uh fall ball ends in October. Uh, the last weekend in October, so teams are still practicing there. So we actually start practicing when they let us, the fields let us, because the city also calls it if we can't, if the fields are too wet. So we will start practicing as early as March and then we we're on the go until the end of October.
Okay, thank you.
And as far as the Conexes, uh, one of the Conexes, excuse me, football still does have equipment there. They are still using it for equipment. The youth ones, as well as we are partially using um one of them. And we, that was just, that's a new thing that the school let us started doing. It's not that either, I don't know which Conex it is because I personally haven't touched it, but I know one of my senior coaches was helping uh the high school and letting us put extra equipment down there as well.
Uh, Tim, I have a co- comment and then a a question, a comment. It's been a long time since I've been involved with junior baseball, but that organization has always been a good steward of Derek's Field and Meldrum uh. Uh, where my son was involved, uh, they didn't play at Cracksburger at at that time. Uh, I also think that there's a a safety issue with dugouts over non dugouts. Uh, sometimes they're playing in June and July when it's hot and gets kids out of the sun. Uh, you know, stray balls. I I don't know about any anything planned. I could looked at the plans and couldn't see it. I don't know if there's any kind of grading or screening in front of the dugouts to prevent foul balls uh from flying into them. But I think the dugouts had a safety measure for uh kids to play also.
You are correct, I'm wrong. You are totally correct on that and as well as when when I run tournaments, uh, I run one at the high school as well as at Cracksburger. The high school dugout, we actually run hoses over and we use misters in there to uh keep the kids warm. I mean, cool, it's not warm out there.
Your question, uh, does the Glassman JV team use that field also or will they be using it? Okay, so that's a high school field also, so we'll have other eyes on that, yeah.
Yes, uh, that that's a coach's discretion, but usually the JV teams do do play or practice down there. Uh, it's just however Webster's uh running his practice, sometimes he runs them all together. It just, it varies.
Now, i- if I may ask, I hope it's appropriate to do this and if not, someone correct me, but uh this project uh approximately. I I'm interested in the difference between the dugouts and then the addition of the ADA ramp. Have you looked um kind of sorted that out like uh? Essentially, I'm asking, how much is this project gonna cost with the dugouts and how much more do you think it might cost with the the ramp?
Yeah, and Commissioner Langston here too, I was gonna chime in about that. Uh, so it does look like your guys are cutting in a li- a little bit on the hill. So I was just curious if maybe you've talked to the excavator about, you know, just kind of running that last, you know, twenty feet there or whatever it is and then uh with your concrete contractor, uh, maybe you being able to uh use the last end of the load to kind of fill that path over to that to the walk path. Uh, just curious if you've had those conversations.
I personally have not had these conversations because I'm just being made aware of this, why this is just now coming up. Um. We were supposed to be doing this a long time ago. We were supposed to have these dugouts done for last season. We are paying for them. We as Gladstone Junior Baseball, no taxpayer dollars. We are also paying for partial of the uh girls dugouts when um they have their teams, when they're ready to play down there. So we've already allocated all that, so this was supposed to be done months ago and then all of a sudden there's a last minute change. And now we're gonna add, we're adding the sidewalks, which is fine. I just have not dealt with that yet because I literally, I think it was a five days ago, found out about this. Um, about now we gotta do the the sidewalks.
Yeah.
So I think it was just the path from the dugouts over to the the asphalt that's already there. But yeah, I think um, you know, when when they had that tractor in there, they could probably get a little, get a little extra cut in for you.
But yeah, they're already there. They should be able to do whatever we need. I just literally, I haven't had that discussion with them.
I guess my concern, because I know it's a a little bit of a grade from that top path down to the dugout. It, I I and my, and we could assume that maybe it's gonna be an easy path, but in my mind, I could see where it could be kind of tricky too with um a little um switchback, if you will. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree. I I don't know what the engineering will entail to do that because we ha- and we have only had this um for a week because we waived the pre-application for this project to try to move it along quicker and save fees and things, so we didn't have the normal pathway where we would look at this in detail, let the applicant know this will be something we'll be looking at and then give them the opportunity to have tho- those deep conversations before you get to hearing, so it is a little bit of a crunch timeframe. Um, so I I agree with Mr. Nystrom that this came up a week ago because this is when the staff report was done without a, the benefit of a pre-op meeting.
So I'm assuming that when you were talking about doing the dugouts. It wasn't until just a week ago that you found out about wanting to put the path for ADA compliance, correct? And so you don't, I'm assuming at this point, nobody knows who's paying for that yet, or were they expecting you guys to pay for that?
Nobody said anything to us. We, like I said, we just found out. I mean, if we need to, I mean, we had to figure out how much it costs. If it's a couple thousand dollars or it's a thousand dollars more, whi- whichever. It can't be that much because it's not structural. Uh, we just need to check and see what that cost is gonna be and then I can take it back to the board and see what, you know. Like I said, um. We like, we're, since we're funding this whole thing in the first place, I can say that I'm not too stressed about our board kicking in another fifteen hundred bucks um to make this work.
Okay, okay, good to know.
That would, I, would fifteen hundred be kind of an optimistic figure though for that type of job?
Um, I I don't know because uh, you know, I don't have any engineering background and don't have any comment on, yeah, I'm not sure what the estimate would be here. I think to Commissioner Langston's point, um, it probably could be done at least on one of these just by using what's already coming to the site. I don't know if the other one that's a little steeper would need something different. Um, but a- again, this is also a school property where ADA requirements are required for schools. Anytime you're touching a school property, you're immediately into ADA, so I would imagine as soon as it goes for a building permit, which was put on hold because of this process, I would imagine that your structural reviewer will say you need to meet ADA because you're a school. So I think regardless of who requires it, I think that it's gonna be required, but you know, okay. I can't say for sure because I'm not a structural building permit reviewer, but I can say that our code requires it.
Are there any other questions, commissioners?
Well, um, I I'd, your organization, I'd be, you know, if in fact we need the, this path, I wonder if there's some funds or some type of grant that might be available to you guys um to try to reduce the burden on the um, on the fundraising. That would be my hope ultimately with this. Um, so just something that maybe think of, but okay, no, nothing else.
You don't have a question? I thought you did, okay. Um, do we have any other testimony?
I've not received any additional requests.
Okay, no other requests, so there's no rebuttal. We're kind of where we're at right now with. Okay. So if there's no further testimony, I would entertain a motion to either close a public hearing or continue it to a date certain. What's the pleasure of the planning commission?
I'll move to uh close the public hearing today.
Okay.
I'll second.
Commissioner Wees made the motion to close the public hearing and it was seconded by Commissioner Langston. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mercero.
Whoa, close.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Lang.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, uh, public hearing is closed at seven fifteen. Okay. Planning commissioners.
Can I ask a staff a question? Or is it?
Yeah, you can.
Um, I'm just curious, does uh like decompose granite, would that suffice as a a hard surface for them?
Um, i- i- if that would pass for ADA, um, yes, I was really um broad in not identifying a material um, just to leave it open to them being able to.
I was just kind of curious, I think I saw it said hard surface.
Hard surface, yeah, that is what our code says.
So they can, they technically could probably get there with compacted gravel or um.
I, if that would qualify for ADA accessibility, um, then that would be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a process question. Um, when we make a recommendation, um. Does it end with us or does it go up through city council after?
This is the final decision unless it's appealed.
Okay, cool.
And and whether we require ADA in the design review and conditional use, if it's required, that will also come into play during the building permit process.
A- a- as far as I know, because it is a school property.
Yeah.
I I do believe that is true, but I I'm not a structural building permit reviewer, so I don't know that. I can't say for a hundred percent, but I do believe that. Um, and I also wanted to know as far as like not mentioning materials, um, so that it can be flexible of how the pathway is designed. I also tried to word it um, so that it it says a minimum six foot wide, that's based on our code, pathway beating ADA standards shall be installed to connect each dugout structure to the pathway, so it could even be one pathway that splits.
Yeah.
Or something like that, just to make it as flexible as possible to work or or if it's, makes more sense to come in at one dugout and then connect to the other one.
Yeah.
If that meets ADA standards, that's fine too. I wanted to make it flexible but still meet the code.
Any other questions? Any questions of, it's Tim, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Any questions or further input, anyone?
The only question I have is so, because I'm not familiar with this process, um, so after this meeting, then what happens next?
So if, once the planning commission issues their approval, there is a fifteen day appeal period in which the a gentleman who testified would have the ability to appeal the city's decision or you as a um applicant or the school district as owner. Anyone can appeal within fifteen days. Um, what I recommended to your architect Sasha Beckwith was to go ahead and resubmit that building permit into the county's queue so that everybody else who's reviewing it from a structural standpoint and ADA and anything else like that is is doing that work in those fifteen days so that at day fifteen, I can sign off and say, yep, good to go on the city's side. Um, so I did have that conversation with her and recommend she do that.
Okay, uh, thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right. So what do you guys want to do? Are you guys ready to make decisions?
I think.
I.
Go ahead.
I think I'm sympathetic to what we heard today about the graffiti. I think the conversation about the longstanding relationship of the club there makes me feel more confident that, you know, what's happened with the Conex box and the, you know, low maintenance of that is probably not going to be as much of an issue. Um, so I think that's where I've been a little back and forth. I I do think I would, I would potentially like to see um our city compliance uh officer, maybe check on the Conex box if that's something that was meant to be temporary. It potentially is something that, you know, we could put some pressure on the school district to do something about, which I think would, you know, start to resolve some of the issues that they're at the property. I will say that is a really nice park. I I even even if we don't consider that a Gladstone City Park, I don't know about the questions there. It's a really nice spot. It's a lot of people go through there. We've been out disc golfing there a handful of times in the past year since they added that and I I think it's a, it's a great spot, so whatever we can do to keep it cleaned up and I think having normal rotating positive people. And I think having normal rotating positive people in there, you know, helps to keep, you know, the, the negative influences out. Yeah.
I'm curious, Heather, do you know if our city compliance officer has any authority over a school property?
Yes, um, anything, any property in the city, the city has authority over to make sure it's meeting the code standards. Um, that said, our code in the R zones is pretty flexible, um, with portable storage containers. We don't require any setbacks and we allow those to be onsite in those R zones. So because this is our seven point two, I don't know if the city has, um, like any teeth in saying, you know, this has been here a while, clean it up. But, um, certainly she has the authority to see, whoops, excuse me, see what's happening on the site and mention that to the school district as a community safety officer.
And how would it be appropriate for us to commandeer her to go in and take a look there?
You know, and I, I'm not sure, now that I'm thinking about this too, I know we also have a school resource officer. So I don't know if who would be appropriate. I'm kind of looking at Tammy, um, but we can certainly bring this.
I would like to follow, follow through on this and make sure that it's looked at and, um.
Be the person to direct us in the right area on whether it's a school resource officer or the community standards.
Yeah, absolutely. I will be here tomorrow and can mention that to Chief Schmerber and see if.
Yeah, I'd like to see us follow through on that. Cause I mean, school property is an investment that we all invest in on our property taxes. Yeah, it is. And if it's not maintained, it makes the whole city not look good.
No, it's a really good point. Um, and just.
I pay for it.
Yeah. A- anecdotally too, just as a parent of public school kids, we do like a monthly cleanup thing and we bring paint out and we do weed removal and stuff as a school community because we don't get that in Portland Public. So, um, we, we also do that as a, as a community. So it sounds like that's happening with the junior baseball organization. And maybe that's even happening with other groups too, and could be a bigger part of the mission of those organizations.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. Well, if there's no further testimony, well, the meeting's already been, the public hearing's already been closed. Um, I would entertain a motion from anyone if we're ready.
I'll make a motion to approve design review, uh, application DR twenty four oh five slash CU twenty four oh two. Standard conditions and the one special condition listed.
I second.
The, the motion was made by Commissioner Langston and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Obante.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Motion passes. Onto our next agenda item, number four, two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and twenty-six long range planning commission, planning commission work plan.
Yes, thank you. Um, so the planning commission is being asked to set a rough work program. I know some things come up sometimes that need, um, attention, whether it's by state regulation or something in the community that comes up that, um, takes precedence. But the city council will be meeting, um, in Ja- January to do their goal setting. And they like to have the boards and commissions also provide the information of what they plan to be working on from, um, for planning side. It's our long range planning program because of course we get all of the private development applications that come through. Um, so we prioritize those as they come along as well. Uh, but unlike the last year, which has been pretty focused on compliance with state regulations, we're actually, um, shifting over to some city priorities. We do need to finish out our Gladstone Town Center project. Um, and then we have a federal requirement now, which is to update our floodplain code. Um, because the floodplain, uh, excuse me, the FEMA floodplain standards have been found to be, um, not in compliance with the endangered species act. So we are required as a national flood insurance community to update our flood code so that everybody's rates stay the same. And it has to do with how much, um, fish egress and ingress, uh, is available during a storm event. We do actually already require mitigation of trees through our habitat conservation area. Um, and then the other piece is no net loss of floodplain area, which we already require. So, um, it won't be a huge change to how Gladstone does it, but it will mean that if you are building a home in the floodplain, um, that right now, you don't have to accommodate for fish passage that you're taking out. You do have to elevate your home and allow flow through of water. But you can imagine that that flow through wouldn't necessarily accommodate fish to flow through as well. So you have to find another space within the floodplain that you're digging out that could allow fish to take refuge from the floodway is the basic. And I've learned that over six hours of trainings, I've got it finally straight in my head exactly what we're required to do and what's changing. Um, so it's called a biological opinion, um, that the Environmental Protection Agency, um, put forward in twenty sixteen that FEMA standards are not being met. FEMA is required to, um, be in compliance by twenty twenty-seven. And they were on, they're on track to do that, but it was just this summer that, um, the EPA said, actually, you need to have, um, posts, uh, excuse me, pre-improvementation compliance measures. They call them PECMS. Um, I know, uh, lots of jargon from the bureaucracy, but, uh, in place for each of your cities that have national flood insurance, cities have to make a decision which route they're going to go by December first of this year. Um, so our city has decided to implement the model code that FEMA has put forward that we've now realized can be updated a little bit. Um, so we'll be working with FEMA staff to put forward a code that fits into the Gladstone floodplain code, but also, um, it's not quite clear and objective. So it doesn't quite meet Oregon state standards. Um, and there's not been a clear answer on cities just adopting that and being okay because it's a federal standard. And so that, um, supersedes state regulation. So you can apply it directly, but, um, I think the route that Gladstone's going to take is, um, put forward an updated code. And we've been working with your city attorney, Barry Elsner Hammond, that meets the requirements of the, um, the BIOP as well as, um, is clear and objective. So it meets our state standards too. So all that to say, that'll be a pretty early twenty twenty-five packet of code information coming your way. We'll make that, um, notification to FEMA in the next week that we're going with that route. And then we'll be putting DLCD notice in and bringing that code section to you all. So that'll be the first thing that you'll put forward to the planning, to the city council in twenty twenty-five because we are required to move as quickly as possible. Um, questions about that?
Does this coincide with the fact that, um, there have been several dams that we have, the state of Oregon has decommissioned? And there's concern about flooding aspects?
It's totally unrelated to dam removal. It's, um, and it's not just the state of Oregon. It's actually six different states. It affects, um, fifteen different salmon and steelhead species. So Colorado, New Mexico, Arizona, um, Oregon, and then it also affects orca whales. So for Puget Sound in Washington state and also for Oregon coastal communities, um, they're dealing with a, a different level of that than we are. Luckily, we're deep enough down the Willamette that I don't think we have to accommodate orcas, but certainly salmon and steelhead in our area. So. Um, yes, so that'll be, that'll be a big one that we're doing a lot of work in the background. And then we'll bringing, be bringing it forward and hopefully be, um, able to coherently answer your questions and things as we bring that forward. But some of it might be because FEMA said so, and we want to keep our flood insurance rating. Um, but as far as one of the options, model code was an option. One option is to not allow any development in the floodplain. And that is essentially then a taking, um, if a property owner has a right to build in the floodplain right now, and then you say no building in the floodplain. So that has, that has other implications with it that most cities, um, are not doing on a permanent basis. Some are doing a moratorium just to get their feet under them and have some time to have some more discussions about this. Um, like I said, here in Gladstone, a lot of what's being required as far as mitigating by planting trees and things is, um, already covered by our habitat conservation area almost. It's, it's not exactly identical to our floodplain zone, but it's close. And so it does accommodate a lot of that already happening. So, um, it doesn't feel as big of a shift in how, how we already manage floodplains to me in our community, um, as it might in some other communities. Um, and then the third, the third way you could do it is permit by permit. So every single permit that comes in provides also a full habitat assessment. Um, and that seemed like a really arduous task on the developer to do that. It turns out it's pretty similar to model code. They'd be like really kind of writing a report that matches what's in the model code anyway. So to just keep it consistent with how we already review things, we, we are planning to just do the model code approach. Um, and then city council in December is taking up the fee schedule. So we'll be adding in a review fee that allows us to use a certified floodplain manager, um, which we do have on staff at three J to review these to make sure we're complying as well.
Great. Thank you very much. You're gonna have us busy working, aren't you?
Yes. That'll be just the first couple of months. We'll get that one done pretty quickly.
Any questions?
So, uh, uh, if any questions on floodplain, and then I have a little more for you.
Oh, okay.
I do, sort of related to a floodplain.
Yeah.
First meeting I attended on, uh, this body, there was a piece of property just off of Abernathy owned by a Mr. Cutting.
Okay.
And he was going to put fifty some units of apartments on there. And, uh, it ran into a floodplain issue and was set aside.
Wetlands.
Wetlands. And I just wondered, is that property still a buildable, viable, uh?
Well, wetlands are different than floodplains. So this, what we're doing won't change that. Um, wetlands, the, the protection of the wetlands wouldn't change. But what I have heard in conversations with Mr. Cutting that did change is that now that there's no parking required, there is probably enough developable space on that site to do it without having to do the huge amount of parking that he'd be required to do to accommodate. So the wetlands will still be protected in the same way. That won't change. But the amount of the property that would need to be developed to accommodate the site to pencil out for him changes if you don't have a parking requirement.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Okay. So then we get to the city initiated, um, measures that we want to take up. And the first is that food cart pods and individual food carts on properties, um, have been a little bit hot. We have the food cart pod on Arlington. We've had a couple of pre-apps, but that's the only one that's actually moved forward into a development type application. But the, um, mayor did ask that we look at, um, regulations for pods that come in so that we have some standards as far as like how they're addressing utilities, how they're addressing runoff and, um, grease traps and things like that. So that, um, if someone comes in, they know exactly what's going to be required of them. So it's a, it's pretty different than a regular design review where we're talking about a building and how you orient the buildings and things. It's, it's sort of more, um, of a temporary type use, but you still want to address all of the different issues with it.
It's more food service related kind of.
Yeah, yeah. And there's a lot of good examples now of other jurisdictions that do this well. Um, Beaverton's one of them. They have a really good food cart pod policy. So what we'll plan to do when we bring this topic forward is bring you some of those examples and had some conversations with those staff and ask them how things work and what they would change about their codes.
Yeah, I think, uh, fire life safety is going to be a big aspect of that too. I think there's been a couple, uh, pods in Portland in the last five years that have had some pretty big fires.
Yeah.
Fallout from that. So I think that'll be, that'll be good to, to cover as well.
Yes, making sure they're safe, um, and accessible. Um, they'll need to be accessible also. Um, then accessory dwelling units, this body, um, talked about relooking at our accessory dwelling unit standards to make sure that they're clear and objective. So we're complying with state law, but then maintaining the standards that are important here locally to Gladstone. So we'll be looking at that as well. Um, and then the, the last one is that, um, a staff level design review. So, um, this year we've had interestingly, just quite a few applications that in other jurisdictions might qualify as staff level. Like the, for example, the hole, um, filling the hole in would typically be just a staff level. Yep, you're meeting the code standards. We can sign off on this. Um, often they still have public notice to the neighboring property owners and residents so that they know what's happening. Um, but it's a quicker, less expensive process to do that. The other, um, example would be the canopy at the public works department. You know, you already have a use that's developed there. And maybe you're planning a five or 10% expansion or less than. Um, and so it really doesn't have a big impact. But again, you're notifying the neighbors if there was a different neighbor than the city on that side that the canopy is going. Um, I thought the dugouts would be a good example of this too, but, um, the conditional use would still bring it to you. So I think, um, there's rarely conditional uses that don't come before a planning commission. Um, so interestingly, that project was on the hook to come to you no matter what, I think. Um, so just, well, again, there's a lot of examples of other cities that do this in a lot of different ways. Sometimes it's a percentage of the overall site that's developing. Sometimes it's, you know, anything under five thousand square feet, we don't care about. Or sometimes it's, um, not visible to public right of way or some, you know, other things like that. So we'll bring you some examples of how other cities do it and talk about how you might, um, feel comfortable having that levels. Um, it becomes important, um, when these projects are just kind of so small, but they have to, you know, wait for the cycle of the planning commission meetings and they're kind of just getting held up and things are, um, so just worth talking about with you. Um, any questions about any of those priorities that we as staff are recommending? Okay. And then are there any that I missed that planning commission would like to see on there?
I guess not.
Okay, it's not a speak now or forever, hold your peace. Well, we can always talk about, um, things as they come up and see how they fit into the priority scheme.
Okay.
And bring that back to city council. Um, on the second page of that document, I just, you know, wanted to note the things that we did get done in twenty twenty-four and it was quite a bit. You know, we kicked off our town center project, got through the stakeholder committees, had our public meeting with that, um, finished all of our climate friendly and equitable communities parking reform. We rezoned Meldrum Park and Gladstone Nature Park to the open space zoning. And then we updated our, um, code to meet all of the state requirements for housing and childcare. Um, so we, we've gotten a lot of work done. Yeah, good job.
Okay.
Um, as well as reviewing now six design review applications, two conditional use permits and a handful of subdivisions and partitions and things. So, yeah.
Great, thank you very, very much.
Yes.
Tammy, was there a question?
Uh, just for economic development, we've seen some things based off of the town center project and the Gladstone downtown core. I'm, I'd just be curious if there's anything outside of those existing structures that our economic development staff would think that there are additional expansions there.
That, um, that the economic development and tourism coordinator would bring forward as things.
Yeah, yeah. Just if there's, I like, as we're, you know, courting potential businesses for the city of Gladstone, are, are there any things that they're hearing that are challenging for businesses to move into the city?
That's a great question. I'm happy to ask her tomorrow and see if there's anything that should be added.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Okay, do we have any business from the public, Tammy?
I have not received any requests.
Okay, business from the planning commission. I'll start with Jennifer.
No new business.
Jacob.
None for me.
And Drew.
Uh, were we supposed to approve this work long range plan?
Um, uh, you don't have to take a vote or anything. I think it's informal, a nod is fine. Um, again, it could change as we go along, but the city council is going to be interested in what each group is putting forward as what they think will.
No worries.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any business? Commissioner Smith.
I'd just like to publicly congratulate our colleague on his election in the city council.
I have no idea. The person who may know that would be Ms. Bannock.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
We had any applications to the planning commission?
That will be coming before our city council in December. Uh, I know we have received one application at this point, um, but I won't know anymore until next month. Okay.
Okay, um, I have no business. I did ask Commissioner Labonte if he would give us kind of an overview summary of his experience with the town center project.
Oh, I will. And, um, um, it, I think I should preface this by saying that, um, I, Heather did a fantastic job. Uh, it, it. It, I the background's really important to this. And I think a lot of the people that were a part of that that community group in some ways have been, you know, excited about downtown projects since at least two thousand, since before two thousand and seventeen. And have kind of felt, seen like the needle kind of get pushed a little further and further. I think the beginning of those meetings and the first meeting, it was really difficult for anybody to really parse out what the town center project is and how that relates to the downtown project and the urban renewal funds and project there also. A lot of the meetings kind of focused on why are we looking at another boundary? We've had so many meetings where we're figuring out boundaries, what is going on. So there were some. I wouldn't say it was negative in any way, but there was something like, come on, what are we doing now? Now it's a bigger area. So I think it was a lot of what was, I think, expressed and you can look back at the the videos and the minutes and, you know, try, definitely don't want to, you know, misstate anything, but the focus was a lot on how can the downtown Portland Ave get better? When are we going to get our sidewalks fixed? When are we going to do this and that? And for me, it was the epiphany came after our third meeting where it's like, well, what what is, what is the the point of the town center project, which, you know, is to bring some life to an area that might not be doing so well. One thing that my impression from the, from that meeting was there was a desire to keep the zone small as the parking is, the parking requirements were really concerning to a lot of people there. I must say though, and and I'll say, mention two things on this. I don't want to say almost everybody, but so many people were looking at the eighty second and around Safeway, that area. So that'd be a good spot for it. But we got to tie it into this area and it has to be tied into this, that weird zone. And in fact, after that meeting, I went back and listened again and the gentleman that was in the meeting and I'd like to, perhaps you can speak to this, or I was trying to get his contact information. I couldn't find it, but the gentleman Glenn from Metro. In that meeting, in one of those meetings, he to the, I brought up the point of, are these two projects separate? Is downtown separate from the the town center project, like in its essence? And I think that's going to be interesting to see. And I, and a lot of this goes to the twenty, is it the twenty forty metro report? Is that exactly? Yep. And the idea is that it has to be related to that zone that we determined however many years ago here in Gladstone. But my understanding from listening to the comments from Glenn was that there there could be some variable in that. I don't, I feel like I'm explaining myself well. I feel like overall, maybe the meetings weren't all that productive. And I honestly feel like we're still, I know that we're moving along and we're doing the things that we need to do, but I honestly feel like it's very much in its infancy. And I think that there still could be some big changes to it. And I think that was the the downtown group that was there, mostly they're downtown business people and folks that live near downtown. Really, they're concerned, well, can we just get something going for Portland Avenue? What's what's going to happen here? We don't want bigger buildings. We don't want like less parking necessarily. So it was very difficult, I think, for people to really see the different projects and what it meant for the community. And I would be interested in Heather's comments on that, if I'm way off the rails on that.
No, I appreciate that. And I think you brought up a really good question after the meeting when you and I spoke, which was, you know, would this project have had a little better input and a broader viewpoint if we had not focused our stakeholder group on Portland Avenue? You know, if we had reached out to business owners near McLaughlin or near Safeway, and I think that would have been a hindsight, you know, I I think it would have been an awesome thing to do for this project. That wasn't where we started. And so we didn't have the benefit of that. And of course, the project has a budget and we're at the limit for what we can reach out for stakeholders on. We're still, you know, in the public portion of it and having work sessions and having public hearings and things coming up. So I think the other piece of it is the last time this group met with city council and there were two kind of options. One was sort of the expanded Portland Ave and the other was the sort of inverted T. And we brought those both to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee and people sort of straw poll voted and it came out fifty fifty. There's reasons to like both of them, right? So so we we have to move forward. We're required to meet our Metro twenty forty rules, which also meets our climate friendly rules from the state. So I think what's going to happen is at our December meeting, staff, we got together, Jackie Marcy, my colleague, Anise and myself, and just said, you know, there's great reasons to pick both of these, but it seemed like there was some excitement over doing the inverted T. And also it brings a little something more to the table. And we still have our downtown improvement plan. And we in fact now have some projects in the works for starting to do some of those improvements through the Public Works Department. Our urban renewal area now covers those areas, so funding can be available for that. So I think those, that fire is still lit and it's still getting stoked along Portland Avenue. And I think what we're going to bring back is a recommendation from staff that we move forward with this inverted T to also expand the area a little bit there. It was was sort of like, which one do we decide? And the inverted T also has the least displacement risk and the least residential area. So it's really, it came down to in our staff discussion of, let's focus this on commercial and economic development and really try to grow that because it seems like a lot of the residential is established. And so with middle housing already being allowed on all these lots, how much more do we upzone these residential properties in the R five zone in this area? Let's focus on mostly commercial. We get a little bit of R five in there, but. Anyway, so but I I agree. I think there was a lot of like, why are we doing this again? And and in my mind, it it has always been the question of why didn't someone just designate a town center when they were doing this whole like downtown improvement plan? I don't know why it wasn't part of that project. But it could be just the way that work has been funded. Sometimes grants are really specific in what the outcomes are. And so if if it wasn't included as an outcome and and your work's being funded by grants, which luckily in Gladstone, a lot of this work has been either state or metro grants has paid for the downtown improvement plan, the code updates, now the town center plan. And so sometimes you're dealing with those. Like if the grant came from the state before the state had the C F A requirement, the state wasn't looking for a town center, metro was. And then if metro funded another piece of it, you know. So I hate to give that bureaucratic crosswire answer, but it could be just as simple as that. So I I'm definitely sympathetic to the why are we looking at another boundary? The other thing we'll be bringing you in December, just so that you have something to sort of chew on and discuss too, is and we talked about this at the Stakeholder Advisory Committee a little bit, what types of code changes we might be looking at to to go along with this boundary. So what's the implementation piece? And we have some code update things and then some city policy type things that could go with that as well. But yeah, I, I agree.
But otherwise it was fun. Meetings were managed well.
And I think it was a good opportunity for local businesses to say like, you know, I think the very first meeting, they were like, hey, let's really make sure we got the flower baskets out in summer and we have enough garbage cans. And it was like a really nice opportunity for them to have the city manager and the mayor in the Zoom room, the virtual room to hear those things at that time, too. So maybe, you know, just making sure those communications are open too.
Well, I want, I'm going to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Before we adjourn, do we have, we have a work session coming up?
Yes. It's in December.
It will be on your regularly scheduled meeting night, but it's an hour earlier. So it starts at five thirty on December seventeenth. And before the meeting, we were discussing, we don't have any business items in for the six thirty meeting that evening. But since we're all already here, we may as well open and accept the meetings minutes from this meeting, go over the November planning report and any information from the commission for the end of the year. And then I'll, if I have responses about my economic development question as far as the work plan and anything from Chief Schmerber to feedback about the maintenance of the backside of Cracksburger safety concerns there, then I can share those as well.
Thank you very much for following through on that. I greatly appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. I'll motion to close the meeting.
I second. Okay, the motion was made by Commissioner Wees and seconded by Commissioner Volbada. I'm gonna get that. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Wees.
Yes.
Commissioner Volbada.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting is adjourned at seven fifty.